Okay, I'm calling the meeting to order. Did you get that, Tamara?
Yes.
Okay. Please take a moment for silent prayer or reflection. Terry, would you do the roll call, please?
Lisa Ramon.
Here.
Archana Olliar.
Here.
Fico Cohen.
Here.
John Mastin.
Here.
Kathy Cox.
Here. Stand for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. May I have a motion to review and accept the agenda for this session?
So moved.
Second. Terry.
Lisa Ramon.
Yes.
Fico Cohen.
Yes.
John Mastin.
Yes.
Archana Olliar.
Yes.
Yes, okay. In a moment, I'm going to call for a motion to go into executive session. It will last for approximately one hour. And upon majority vote of the governing board to go into executive session, it will be pursuant to ARS 38-431.03A3 for the purpose of receiving legal information from the attorney of the public regarding policy IHAMB and IHAMB-R Family Life Education. May I have a motion to go into executive session?
So moved.
Second. Terry.
Fico Cohen.
Yes.
Lisa Ramon.
Yes.
Archana Olliar.
Yes.
John Mastin.
Yes.
Kathy Cox.
Yes. But this is not, this is not a work session. We will not be accepting public comments. I'm going to turn this, the next item, item number four, discussion and possible action regarding timeline for adoption of policies IHAMB and IHAMB-R Family Life Education to Mrs. Asire.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam President, Members of the Board. This item is intended as a discussion item for the Board regarding a possible timeline for adoption of our policy. At the last Board meeting, the Board did adopt direction to bring this back to the September meeting. However, after consultation with our attorney in discussion about giving this the opportunity that it needs to be fully discussed and transparent, the recommendation is that we stretch this out and actually have a very transparent process and collect the information that we need in order to have a discussion. And so first, I would like to pass out a proposed timeline. And this timeline is actually just a beginning point for a conversation. It was just putting something on paper to give a sense of where we may need to go next and then have an opportunity to talk about what my suggestions would be, whether or not we stick with the timeline that I have noted here. So as part of the discussion is also a discussion of what exactly do we still need in order to move forward. And so this timeline starts from today, which is our special session. And I note that September 17th is our next regular Board meeting. And so if we are not going to bring this policy back to that regular Board meeting, once we adopt the timeline, we would have, and to rescind that action would be a part of it. And so what I have talked about in the next section is the idea that we may need to collect additional information so that the Board can have an informed discussion. And so the question would be, what kind of information does the Board still need in order to have an informed discussion around this policy so that, so that all of the different viewpoints are understood? I did pass out in the executive session a copy of the Arizona Administrative Code and attached to the back of that were some possibly suggestions if we want to actually do a survey of our parents and community to see if they want to provide any information or not. That would be one option. If there are any other sources of information that the Board fills that we need to look at in order to gather information for the Board's consideration, do, is there a direction from the Board? Should we be looking at language from other policies that are out there, either at the state or national level, that are not already the NSBA boilerplate language options? And then, once we've got an information list out to the Board, having some time for all of the Board members to read and reflect, and then my suggestion would then be looking at, which sounds like it's a long way away, it's not, but the beginning of October, October 1st, to actually have a Board work session where the Board could actually discuss and each person have an opportunity to share their perspectives and discuss their perspectives, hear them out. And then, at that point, do we need time to reflect? Do we need time to consider? Would we want to talk about proposed language? Would it be wise for the Board to then go, go off and consider and submit proposed language for another, a further discussion? So that's why this is, is stretched out. We do have a fall break in there. And then looking at, depending on how the Board wants to lay this out, another session to discuss those policy proposals that have been submitted to actually suggest revisions. And then at that point, we would need to send our revisions to our attorney for review. She has indicated that she would do that as quickly as she could, that it wouldn't have to be a long timeline for her to review them. And so that would be, in the timeline that I have proposed, would probably bring back for actual policy voting on November 19th. So that was a conversation point to begin from. And so I think really, starting from today, what do you see as the next necessary steps? And how do we want to map this out? Would be the discussion for the Board.
Okay. Who would like to go first? I will go first. I like the idea of the parent's survey. I think that's a really good idea to do that. And I appreciate the work that you, the preliminary work that you've done on this. I haven't looked at all of it, but you've worked quite hard on this. Anyone else? We will not be taking any kind of a vote tonight. We're just, we're just going to give our thoughts and ideas. So anyone else about the parent's survey?
If I could explain what I passed out to you as a parent's survey. Basically, what I did is started with the questions that I believe we were considering. And then, because the question had come up about this being the K-12 curriculum would be, I didn't put boxes in or anything, but do you believe this is appropriate for K-6, for 7, 8, or for 9 through 12? So actually separating it out, if there's a grade span, that would be appropriate. And then I basically went through the, what the Arizona Administrative Code says and the topics that were in the curriculum that was currently being taught was how I came up with these. This is not a prescriptive list. It was simply getting some ideas down on paper.
But you, just because the, the audience cannot see the survey, there is a place for people to say, I don't believe anything should be taught. And then there's another section for, I do believe that something should be taught. And it brings, breaks the, the grades down, as she said, K-6, 7, 8, and then 9, 12. So we should get a valid response in that way.
That was a beginning point.
Anyone else?
I, I'm in favor of surveying parents, but I'm also in favor of surveying community. Our community spends through local, state, and federal tax dollars over $40 million a year to run our schools, to pay our staff, and to teach our children what they need to know. When they're doing that, they should know what's being taught and they should have some level of a voice in what's being taught to the students. So I definitely do want to see that part acknowledged in any survey. I think that we can, we can survey and we can discuss till we're blue in the face. I think at the end of the day, we should have some type of a program, but we need to distance the district as much as possible from that program. My thought process has always been that, you know, we've also got to honor family values for the individual families in whatever we do. Not everybody is going to be a fan of what is taught in a, in a course such as this in one manner, way, shape, or form. I'm also a much bigger fan of abstinence as opposed to modified abstinence in, in just my personal take on it. But I do think we should, we should have the input. We should see what the community wants. We should give them that and we should give our community better-than-normal options on how we're going to engage with them in this subject.
How do you suggest that we disseminate the survey to the public? What would be the best way?
I think we could put it on our website if we could figure out a way for vote once and you're, you can't come back again. And I really think that we should have this vote once and you can't come back again. I have heard, time and again, of surveys that have gone out, whether it's through the district or through other places, and people are voting multiple times on whatever their choice is. I'm all for public opinion. I'm not for group think. And, and that's what you get when you don't limit that choice. You get the group think.
We would have to investigate how to do that.
Anybody else?
I don't know. We don't send all our curricula to the taxpayers to find out what they think of what we're teaching. So why this one particular thing? This is just another subject in school.
May I answer that? We actually do send our curricula out to the taxpayers. We're required by law, when we adopt a textbook, to have it on, on display for so many days. We're required to form committees to adopt curricula. And so, yes, we do solicit input from the community.
Yeah, but we don't ask them what they think of it. We tell them that this is it.
No.
No.
I respectfully disagree with you. Well, no. It's just that this is, just like dress code, this is a controversial subject. And I think it's important that the community feel that, that they had a say, not a symbolic say, but a significant say in what we do. And we, we want their support for our schools. We want them to have a part in what we do. We want them to have a chance to modify our thinking, to, to give us some direction. And also, many people in our, in the community were former students in our district and now they have children in the school district as well, or their grandparents. And I mean, we, you know, we are a community. And that sense of community is what we, we need to protect and, and develop and make everyone feel part. Now that's, but I'm from the South. You know, that's how we do things. It's all about the community, but that's where I'm coming from.
I didn't have my facts correct. Sorry.
Oh, no, no, no. That's, that's fine. Anyone else?
So I've got two different concerns. One has to do with the, with the State Board rule that we're looking at, R 7-2-303, which governs sex ed. And under Section A C3, it says, "Lessons shall not include tests, psychological inventories, surveys, or examinations containing any questions about the student's or his parents' personal beliefs or practices in sex, family life, morality, values, or religion." But I'm reading a letter that the whole Board got from the Health Department talking about how they're doing exactly that. So I feel like there's a lot of work that needs to be done and I don't want to over, you know, just fly by everything. So that's the one concern existing. And then when the survey, I like the idea of a survey. I think a community survey is important, not just parents, because, you know, while I care what parents think, I care what every person thinks. And we often hear how parents aren't involved, so I don't think those are the only people that we should be, you know, listening to. Although I'm happy to listen to anybody. But my concern is that when I'm looking at the current curriculum that we have, and I know it's old, it's not even teaching about the actual things that will protect our children. A lot of it revolves around the feelings and the values and the emotions and the relationships. And it's not really about the fact that, you know, boys are asymptomatic carriers of HPV. And it's not detailed like that. So maybe they do discuss that, but it's not in the actual curriculum. So I'm really concerned about what is it exactly that we're trying to teach them? Are we trying to teach them how to protect themselves? Or are we trying to reorganize their values, their attitudes, and their behaviors? Because I'm leaning more towards that. And that is a concern, because that's not the school district's job to do that.
And so if, sorry, I guess is the question, what is the purpose of sex education? That we need to define that before we actually talk further about it?
I, I don't want to be a wet blanket, but when I'm reading the question on the survey, you know, if, if you're just the average parent who's running to soccer and you're doing this and you're doing that, you're not going to understand what it is that I'm concerned about sitting here, spending hours and hours reading. You're just going to say, I went through sex ed and, you know.
It was fine.
It was fine. And not realizing that there's actual activities where we're discussing the merits of a family value and then asking our students to agree, disagree, unsure, or you can change your mind about your family values because there's no judgment here. That's wrong for the school to participate in that.
Can you cite an example where the merits of specific family values were discussed?
You know, I'm, it's funny how you want to fight me. You have an email sitting in your inbox from the Health Department admitting that this is the activity that they're doing. And you've had the opportunity to view the 452 pages. Have you viewed it? Have you come in and read it?
I'm just asking the question if you can cite an example.
You're, you're always asking me to cite an example. And then if I cite an example, you come off with a, well, that's, you know, it's not a good enough example. So this is what they're telling us they're doing. So if they're telling us they're doing it, I'm going to believe them.
Excuse me, but I think our job is to educate the students, provide them with the information on, on whatever is factual right now.
I agree.
And then let them disseminate, you know, kind of digest it and think about it as they will. But our, our goal is to educate them and we have to educate them on all the facts that are available to us right now. That's what I mean.
And I thought one of the speakers at our last meeting, first of all, I was really pleased to see so many high schoolers come and so many of them be willing to speak. One of them spoke specifically about how she espouses very conservative values about sex and that it's important to her to wait until marriage. And she said that following the program, she felt that those values were still completely in place, that they were not changed, and that she felt no one was trying to change them. That all she was given was a set of facts to run alongside those values.
I do, I, I am in the process of going through the curriculum. And I spent a lot of time today just on the introduction, which spells out the philosophy. And again and again, it, the, the goal is to develop, help kids be thinking about themselves so that, and their goals in life, so that they're making responsible choices right now and becoming responsible adults. And I haven't seen the curriculum yet to see how that plays out. But the, the goals, I thought were, were really good goals. And I think, I mean, I think, I don't, you might not have spent time reading all of that, all those pages, but I actually took notes and everything. And I think you would agree with me, at least the introduction. The goal is wonderful. But I do think it would be good for us, and could we even do that tonight, to discuss what we want the purpose of our sex ed program to be? Because I do agree with Nicole that it just isn't all of education. Sometimes the most important thing you do is, is not teach math or science. It's developing, developing attitudes and habits in, in kids so that when they become adults, that they're really ready for that responsibility. And so I do agree with you on that point, that something like that should be the purpose of this, because this is central to all of our students reaching, meeting their goals in life and not doing complicating things along the way, that kind of thing, to make them think about that. Every, every step, every choice they make could complicate the rest of their lives. And, you know, with all the feelings and things that they get, they don't think about that. And I think we do need to get in that. It might be a slippery slope, just bringing that up, but it is a slippery slope. But I think we have to do that.
As a parent, and I am a parent. I've had four students in the district at any given time. I've got one that just went off to college. When ninth grade hit and I needed to understand what our sex ed program that we didn't know that we had as a Board until scant month ago, when I needed to know what was in it, I called the high school. I couldn't be told what was in it. I had to get the call back. And when I got the call back, I was assured everything was fine. I was given partial information and I couldn't look at curriculum as is defined by Arizona law. My problem as a parent, not as a Board member sitting here, but as a parent, is if I would have known what was in the curriculum, which I think the general public is going to think is very innocuous, in my household, I probably would have opted not to have my son go.
Is that because of this section on condoms?
It, it, it doesn't fit with the worldview that I teach in my home.
But then you could have opted out of that section.
I, I could have opted out of the entire program and I probably would have been better off with it.
Okay.
The, the problem is, in a nutshell, we're, we're talking about what should be in the program, what shouldn't be in the program, what the state may mandate, what the state won't mandate. The bottom line is this. It's personal. It's family-based. We really honestly need to have a way for parents to know what's in there in a very comprehensive way. I mean, this stuff should be on our website. Download it, read the entire curriculum from the teacher's edition, know exactly what is taught and how it is taught. That should be available. But we should also have it to where, if you as a parent want to go actually see what's happening, you should be able to go. The middle of the school day for a high school student's parent is probably not the place to do that. Further, when I look at the survey, I see K-6, 7, 8, and 9, 12 as some of the options on here. As a parent, I don't want to see a kindergartner taught this. I think that fifth grade is probably appropriate for something in a, in a very basic way. I think seventh grade is probably very appropriate for the next step of that. And then I think at ninth grade, we should have something a little bit more involved. But as a parent, I want to know what's being taught to my kid, especially in this. And I want the ability to say, absolutely not. And I don't want them sent to another class or a study hall or the library so that all their friends know that they got opted out of it. I don't want my kid embarrassed because, oh, well, my dad didn't want me to go. We need to be smarter than some of this. And, and quite frankly, if, if the numbers I've heard in the background bandied about, and, and don't quote me on this because it's just something I've, I've overheard, I think we're at 20% right now with the program we have of opt-out.
Are you, are you saying that we have 20% of our students opting out?
Yes.
Where did, I have not heard that.
I've heard it in the background. Don't quote me on that. But it, but if that's the number that we have already, I, I think it's going to go higher if we put something out there. And, and we should honor the parents' choice at that point. We should move this outside of regular school hours.
I spoke to the department head at the, in the PE department. And they're very, according to her, there are very few parents who opt out. She said maybe three in, in a year.
If, if that's the case, great.
Okay.
But, but again, do all the parents know what's being taught? Have we followed Arizona revised statutes in what we're supposed to do as far as, as publicizing this? And again, from a parent's perspective, I didn't know what my kid was being taught in a, in a, in a good, finite way where I could make an intelligent, informed decision. He, he, he was taught things that I would not have wanted him to be taught. And it's not a question of whether or not he, he should be taught about condoms or birth control or, or any of the other stuff that is discussed in these classes. It's a question of whether or not I can put my worldview as a parent behind that discussion. There's not a discussion point and we need to, we need to literally, when we're talking about 13 and 14-year-old children, their parent should be involved in this discussion. And I think the purpose of having a sex ed class is to ease the burden on the parent in that discussion. But when we put it in the middle of the school day, it doesn't come home the way that it's supposed to. And that expanded discussion that I believe was the intent of having this in schools doesn't happen.
I'm sorry, let me just, for a moment. This survey was just to get, again, ideas out there. If anybody has suggestions for language or whatever.
I'm just picking on the survey. It's okay.
That's okay. I'm, I'm, I have very thick skin. It's not a problem. The older you get, you know, the thicker it gets. Those little wrinkles just protect you. So I, it's not an issue, just to get us thinking about it and whether or not we want that. And I know, I don't want to stop you from making your comment, but one of the big pieces for us would be, each of you need an opportunity to express your views on this and have a chance to discuss it. And that's not what's agendized for this evening. And so the, the question would be, if I could direct you back to you, is what information do you still need in order to feel like you really can have this discussion and have all the information that you need? I will say from, if I may clarify for Mr. Mastin, because the 20% term came from one of the county presenters. When I asked her about how many students opt out, she said it would be around 20% or slightly less.
For our specific school?
For the program in general, yeah.
In the county, she thought. Correct? The county?
Yes.
Okay. All right.
I would like to get the timeline, but I am a little bit confused, Mr. Mastin. You said that you were unaware that there was a sex education program being taught at the school, but you'd called the district to ask about it. So I'm wondering how both of those statements are true.
As a Board member, I was told that we didn't teach. And quite frankly, as a, as a person on the Board, it was my understanding, at least because I don't have direct knowledge on, on some of these things, that when you have a third party come in and teach a program, the school is really facilitating the program. The school's not directly teaching it. Have we approved curriculum for those programs directly?
From what I can gather, we have not in the past.
Okay.
And that does need to be, I would definitely say that that needs to be brought up to code.
But, but taking the state law issue out of it, if we have an approved curriculum and we have a third party coming into our health class, are we teaching it now?
My, my understanding from what I've been told is that it has been suspended until we reach a decision.
Have we in the past 20 years with the Health Department coming in taught sex ed ourselves as a district? Or have we used a third party to do it?
A third party.
We've outsourced to professionals.
Medical professionals. And I'll, I'll tell you why we have. Now, not, not at the elementary level. Just at, as my understanding, it's just at the high school level. I have, those guys over there in the PE department are very uncomfortable when they have to teach this. Not Mrs. Mayor. She's not, she's not uncomfortable. I don't know the new PE teachers in the, in the girls depart, the girls PE program. But this, it's, they're uncomfortable and this lends itself to that situation where you bring in a third provider. And the third provider, these are nurses. I understand that these are medical professionals.
I, I understand that.
Okay.
And I'm appreciative of that.
Yeah, yeah.
Do we teach it in all of our elementary schools?
Fifth, the fifth grade is taught. And sometimes the nurse does it. Sometimes, depends on each school, the, the principal does it. Sometimes the teacher does it. At each school, it's handled differently in the fifth grade.
Are we actually teaching something historically at all of the elementary schools?
So actually, in the process of researching all of the information, we have had a program in the past that was being taught at all elementary schools. Currently, three out of our six elementary schools are still using that program at the fifth grade.
And what are the other three? What have the other three been using since we're not teaching?
They are not using anything.
They're not doing anything.
They're not teaching it.
It seems, once we stopped putting a registered nurse at every school and we had, or the nurses were and we had, or the nurses were being shared by two schools and we put a health assistant in, that there was really no one to coordinate the program or teach the program. And it just kind of got dropped at those schools.
And just one more clarification for the fifth graders. It's my understanding that we use the term sex ed because it's kind of a shorthand. But at the fifth grade level, it was strictly hygiene and kind of the changes that you would expect at puberty. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, so I happen to agree that the first thing we should start with is, before we do the parents' survey, is that we need to decide what is the purpose of a sex ed program. I think that's very important to do. So as far as the timeline goes, that would be the first thing I feel that we'd need to discuss. And then you mentioned that we could have a work session in October after the parents' survey goes out.
We could. And, you know, this, you also may want to have a session sooner or at that time first to talk about how are we going to define it? Because if we're going to define it, we probably want to put that in the survey so parents understand when we ask the question, do you support teaching sex ed in our school? Here's how we define sex ed. And then, or not, and then if you do, then the question would be, do you want to go back into some of the other topics that were added in as a part of the curriculum or?
I think it would be good to get, and not this moment because I think it takes some thought, but I think it would be good to have the board maybe submit to you what they would like to see in sex ed. What they think is important, what information they think is important. And I would also like to solicit feedback from medical, you know, from the medical community. Not about how they feel about something, but the science of what is being taught, you know.
I have a couple of articles from the American Academy of Pediatricians that I could forward to you and then you could, at your discretion, disperse to the board.
And those were information pieces that I also, when we send to the board, anything that's come out is also getting posted in that file that we had sent originally as reference.
And then maybe solicit from our local medical community. I know years ago, Dr. Nelson actually used to come into the school and deliver the program himself when I was a teacher years ago in elementary. And he would be, he's still around, he'd be a really good person to solicit from. And I'm sure there are others, if you have suggestions, other doctors.
And then I would also be interested in discussing the risk avoidance versus risk reduction because that's really what it boils down to if we're talking about a program.
Do you want to explain that?
Well, do you want to avoid the potential for all the consequences that come along with sex? Or do you want to reduce the risk because you're just going to throw your hands up and say, they're going to do it anyway? There's actual data on both sides of that argument. And I'd be interested in everybody being able to have a discussion on that data.
A risk reduction program would cite within its curriculum, condoms have a, condoms fail 3% of the time. As, just remembering way back when, but condoms fail about 3% of the time to prevent pregnancy or abstinence is 100% every time.
And a risk avoidance is going to tell you that condoms were only made for pregnancy and they do nothing to protect you from disease. So how many of our kids know that? I haven't found that part in the current curriculum. But how many young men or women think they're being protected because they're wearing a condom? And oh, by the way, now you've got, you know, syphilis or whatever. Because that's not what condoms were made for. So the risk avoidance, they offer a lot of the information, they're just not condoning it. That's really the bottom line. The avoidance is, it's not that they're trying to hide all this information. They're truly trying to arm. Everybody in their brother that I've talked to, nobody's ever said to me, boy, I wish I'd had sex younger. Everybody I talked to says, I wish I had waited. So why aren't we giving that message to our kids? We can still arm them with all the facts, but why would we encourage them to imitate whatever they're seeing on TV or whatever is cool for the day? That's kind of how I feel about it.
It's kind of hard to have, do a lecture or have a discussion with students and talk about, it's not that I don't agree with you, but I'm talking about in reality, in that classroom. And just say, okay, avoid it, abstain. And then that is it because you're not getting to the heart of where the matter is.
Well.
But that's not what avoidance programs are. They do discuss in detail the ways in which you can protect yourself. They're just not advocating. They're not teaching you how to put a condom on.
Okay, okay, okay.
They're not teaching, they're not, they're not sending you to resources that are going to encourage you to become an active, you know, they're looking to delay.
Thank you for clarifying. I understand, okay. All right. So then do we need to have a work session before October?
I think.
Before we send anything out to survey, we need to have some consensus around how we want to define. And then what kinds of questions do we want to include? So I think in the meantime, and that would be the timeline question as well, the request that I would have for the board would be to submit, I have a note here, your.
Give us a date.
Language of what should be taught in sex ed. And then also any suggestions that you would have for the survey or data that need to be collected. And so if, we're looking at today as the end of August basically. And we have really no time before the September 17th meeting. And so if we were looking at getting suggestions by then and then having a chance to to review and discuss, we could move the October one up a little bit. I didn't bring my calendar with me, but.
Well, just give us a deadline for the first part, the, what is the purpose of sex ed? What's our definition of?
Well, I think I need some guidance from you all on that, on how much time you need for that.
And suggestions for the survey. I could probably have mine by next week.
Maybe we could do a general solicitation. The newspaper's here and the board is here. And we're going to accept, you know, suggestions or comments on what you think sex ed should be or what you think the sex ed survey question should be. I mean, just leave it open. It's, I doubt that we're going to be super inundated with it. It'll be easy to go through and decide which is.
I thought at the work session, at the work session, my impression was that there was a problem in defining terms. People used the word, you know, somebody said, I don't want my kids taught sex, but I want them to talk about sexuality. I mean, sex ed doesn't necessarily mean that we as a district are teaching our kids about sex. And I hope not really sexuality, but sex ed has, is a whole different term. But people tend to use all three interchangeably. And I think that one thing it confuses matters.
It really is a problem, but I think if we can get to what we as a district are going to teach in a very basic way into a sentence or two.
This is our sex ed.
And delineate, I think if we delineate on the survey, a tighter grade structure on that K eight or that K six, that would help quite a bit. And then come up with a sentence or two for each one of those as to what we're actually thinking of doing in a, you know, an agree or disagree type survey. I think that might hit that nail pretty darned close on the head.
So the September 17th board meeting is two weeks away. Several of us will be gone next week.
Yes.
Then from the September board meeting to October 1st is two weeks. So it's, that's kind of the span on these dates is about a two-week span. And so I guess in thinking about the timing for that, to get these suggestions all in, would it be appropriate to have everything in by the 17th? So that we have a chance to go through them and share them for the October 1st and then actually have our work session on the 1st to talk about our definition and finish up the survey? Is that?
Would you like, would you like to send us out an email asking the questions? Because we may be all answering different questions.
Yes, no, I will absolutely do that. I'm just kind of looking for a timeline on that in thinking about.
I think that would work. That gives plenty of time.
So then October 1st would be where we're identifying final survey questions and our definitions. Is that right?
October the first.
I thought you said, I thought you said definitions and what data we need, not survey questions.
Well, she said that we, she would welcome suggestions for the parents, for the community parents' survey, yes. She would, you would.
I apologize. I didn't hear your question.
So what you said earlier a few minutes ago was that we would ask the board members for a definition and what additional data they would like to see collected.
Correct.
But now you're saying survey questions, so.
Well, and so that was what came up about the survey was, do we start a survey without having defined sex ed? Because everybody who takes a survey is going to interpret that term based on their own experiences. And so would it be better for us to define as a district, what we mean by sex ed when we ask the question is this? And so that would be for the board members to come up with and determine what is our definition. And then also thinking about in the absence of a definition, but how would the survey better be structured than what I have here as a beginning point? What kinds of questions would we ask? So that discussion could occur on October 1st. But in the meantime, I also am asking for any information that the board would like to have shared, sent in so that we can get that out. And if there's further information that you need me to gather, if you could give us direction on that today as well.
But all.
That was a lot.
But do that by October the first. You want that, when do you want that information? What is your deadline?
Well, information aside from survey data, so if you have resources and things that you want to share. So for example, Mrs. Ramon mentioned that she had some articles that she would like to share with the board. So anything that you have that you feel the whole board needs to see, if you can get, start getting that in so that the board has time to review it. So that's background information. And then in the meantime, we're working on individually are the board's definitions for how we would define sex ed. And then we would have that discussion as well as a further discussion about what should be in the survey on the October 1st work session.
Well, I think your deadline for the board to get back to you, I apologize, is September the 17th. Is that?
That would be helpful, yes, if we could get, yes, thank you. The 17th so that we can start to process it.
All right. I shall take that direction.
That was clear as mud.
No, I got it. I'll be back to you before then, I hope. All right, so where are we then? Do we have to? Can we continue our timeline at, once we get this information in? Let's say parents don't want a sex ed program. Let's say the community doesn't want one. Then, or let's say that they do, then we might want to continue the timeline.
So for the October 1st, we're actually developing a survey. We won't have that information yet. And so then the question would be then, if we can come to some consensus around a survey, that could go out to parents. We may be able to get that, that data in and out to the board members to begin a discussion. And so then the question would be, when do we want to have that discussion? So this pushes what I have on the paper here, pushes it back a little bit.
Would it be too late for the board to, are we going to vote on the, we're going to vote on the survey? Like, we're going to come to?
I think we need to, absolutely.
So would it be doable to push that piece to October 22nd? Still list all the responses from the board or whatever? But, or is that too long of a timeline? Because now, by the time we're adopting policy, we're at December or January.
Yeah. If we want to get survey data, I think we need to be careful about pushing that too far out because now we get into the holidays and things like that where we won't end up getting feedback. So that's the only, the only.
So when would you want the survey to go out? We would vote on it at the October 1st?
October 1st, and then we could get it together and get it out by.
It could not be a work session then, it would be a special session.
A special session, okay. If we're going to have an action item. So we could get it out by the 7th and have results back.
By the 22nd.
Possibly by the 4th even, and then give time for review. And so we could have the results back on the 22nd.
So we'll have a special meeting on October 1st then, instead of a work session? Because we'll be voting on survey questions, okay.
And of course, we can still have discussion.
Sure.
And go from there.
I did want to ask about what, the information that you're asking for prior to the 17th, September 17th, are you asking for kind of a laundry list of topics? For instance, if I could just read what I originally wrote, and this is no longer under consideration. But LHUSD instructions shall focus on reproductive systems, health consequences, consent, contraception, and disease prevention with a primary emphasis on abstinence. Is that the kind of information that you are looking for, like as to list the certain topics?
So how would we, is that how we would define sex ed? Is the question there?
Okay.
Now, for the topics, so if we're, so for the things that we might need research on. So for example, Mrs. Cohen had mentioned there was some data on risk avoidance versus risk reduction. So would all of you like to see that data so that that can be part of the discussion? Getting some information from some of our medical practitioners. That would be information that we would need to have some time to collect. So if that's information that you would like, that would be, so that's what I'm looking for is, what is it that you can gather and provide and what is it that you need us to gather and provide?
I think the risk reduction, risk avoidance is probably the most important topic to have a conversation to begin with just because those are two different programs. And that seems to be where, you know, the divide lies between at least myself and Lisa, for sure, so. And I'm sure a lot of people in the community.
Whatever we end up doing, I would like to always have a list of topics that parents know are not being covered. We do, we will not introduce or cover these topics so that parents know if we choose not to teach about condoms, that we're not. I mean, and a lot of them maybe had that program and think that we're still doing that for their children. I think that's just a really important thing.
I do too, and I think following the law is really important. And that's a big concern too, because you're not supposed to talk about family values. And we're clearly doing that, or we're doing that. So I want to be real clear about, even if the kids liked it and everybody thought everything was great, it doesn't change the fact that we weren't supposed to be doing it.
I think we should find a program that models what the community wants. And in fact, when I look at the administrative rule on sex education, it says, "All sexual education materials and instructions shall be age-appropriate. Recognize the needs of exceptional students. Meet the needs of the district. Recognize local community standards and sensitivities." And then it goes on from there. But it does, in the administrative rule, say that it should be, it should recognize community sensitivities. The other thing is, you know, we need to tell people what we teach, what we don't teach. Let's just put the whole thing up on the website.
Yeah.
And just, we put our financial data up there, let's put this up there.
I think that's a great idea.
Any parent who wants to go through it, it's there.
I agree.
I can tell you one hurdle that might be with what you've just said. When, I did speak with the Mojave County Department of Health Services and asked them about distributing the curriculum materials. They said that the file is too large to email. It would be untenable to do that. They also said that the materials cost $350 apiece, that they cannot be in violation of copyright law. of copyright law, they cannot post it on a website, but they could, of course, make a paper, a hard copy available at the district office, which would be in compliance with our ASBA guidelines.
But we may end up not using that particular program, we don't know.
That's absolutely true, I just wanted to point out that that might not be workable in any other way.
For that particular one, or some other program.
And if we do, if we adopt a copyrighted curriculum, there will be issues with that, and so we would have to do that. If we created our own, then that would be available for posting, so...
So can everyone look at it, if we post it on the website? Even students?
Just the curriculum, yes.
Just the curriculum.
You know, one way around that is to, is to have a very good outline, because most of the material, for instance, the one that we use now, has, has an outline in it, chapter listing of what's in the book. And then we have, correlating with that, from the county Health Department, what they actually teach out of that listing. So I think that we could, even in a very basic and general way, inform our, inform our public of what we're teaching.
Do we need to continue developing the timeline now, tonight? Or should we get to a certain point with all of this?
That we're good right now with, if you're comfortable saying that we will have a special meeting on October 1st. I will send out an email to the board that, I guess I should turn my mic on. I will send out an email to the board, asking for the two pieces of information that we've already discussed, which would be any suggestions for the survey, and your definition of what you believe that sex ed should be, so that we can discuss those at the October 1st. I will also ask the board to submit any data that they have collected that they would like to share, any relevant information, and also any suggestions for data that you would like for staff to collect between now and, and the discussion that the board will have regarding sex education, so...
I'd like to make one more suggestion to go alongside that. I know some of the information that was dispersed by the district created some confusion, and there was a good reason why it was distributed. That information was made available to all the board members, so in compliance with open meeting law, we did need to make that available to the public. But a lot of the things that were posted were examples of sort of outlined curriculums, and things that our board was not considering at that time, and is not considering now. And so I think that as board members, we ought to be careful to disperse information based on what we would like to see, instead of throwing out examples of things that we don't want to see.
At this time?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, any further discussion?
I agree with that, because there's too many things that we could include and don't want to.
Okay, your last chance.
And I do believe that when we define what sex ed is, that will address some of that issue and concern, so...
Okay, here's your last chance. No? Then I'm, I'm, we'll ask for a motion for adjournment?
No, we need a motion to, to adopt the timeline as discussed, and to rescind...
I thought we couldn't make a motion tonight.
So moved.
And to rescind the board's action to require the policy to come back at the September 17th meeting.
So moved.
Okay, second?
Second.
I'm sorry, I thought I was sold in, there would be no motion tonight. Okay.
Only on what we have on the agenda.
Okay, all right, okay. All right, Terry?
Arjana Oliar?
Yes.
Lisa Ramon?
Yes.
Nicole Cohen?
Yes.
John Mastin?
Yes.
Kathy Fox?
Yes.
Now we do a motion to adjourn.
I move that we adjourn.
I second.
Terry?
John Mastin?
Yes.
Nicole Cohen?
No.
Lisa Ramon?
Yes.
Arjana Oliar?
Yes.
Yes. The meeting is adjourned.